This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones, and assistive listening devices are available. Mark Alter, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Broomminter?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoover?
Here.
Okay. Well, tonight we have a special treat, the first of what I hope will be many quick updates from our Sustainable Highland Park group. And Tina Weishouse is here to speak with us.
Hi. Yeah, so maybe this will be irregular, or maybe not, but there's a lot of things that are coming up that we want the public to know about, so I'm here to speak to them. The first thing is that our plastic bag ordinance called Bring Your Own Bag is now entering its fifth month, and starting on November 1st, we will go into Phase 2. So the first phase was to put a price, a fee of 10 cents on plastic, and to offer paper bags instead. The second phase, starting November 1st, will be to ban plastic and to put that 10-cent fee on paper. I want to tell people how happy it makes me to go into the supermarket and see everybody bringing their own bag. It took about a month to make that behavior change, and maybe some people still don't like it, but it's amazing how many bags are not being given out. I think people are choosing not to pay the 10 cents, and when they're confronted, November 1st, we're going to do outreach to the whole community. We're going to go down to remind all the merchants that we're going into Phase 2. But it's exciting to see that the change took place, just the way it's happened around the country when these ordinances are passed, and we're looking forward to a state bill becoming law by the end of this session, which will be much more inclusive of other things. Now, we are going to start a pilot project with paper straws, and it also makes us happy to see that some restaurants have already started to buy on their own paper straws. We have thousands of paper straws that we bought, and we're going to give hundreds out to each restaurant and see if they want them, and see if they want to cooperate and just hand out the paper. I don't think anybody is complaining. I'm not even sure that in the restaurants where they do hand out paper straws instead of plastic, that they know the difference. I don't think the customers know the difference, that paper straws hold up pretty well. But just for everybody to remember, that if the state bill becomes law, plastic straws will also be outlawed in that bill. And so it is a much more inclusive bill, but we're tracking it, and we're hoping that we can do that in town before the state does its thing. So those two things are coming, and you know, November 1st will be going into the plastic bag ban. And then I want to speak to the two ordinances, or are they resolutions?
They're resolutions.
They're resolutions, yeah. The anti-idling, I want to thank you for taking them up. The one is the Anti-IDling Resolution, which I think is a minute of idling, and then we will be asking people, we will be doing outreach and education with the school district as well, which we think has passed their resolution, to encourage people to turn their cars off, because so much emissions goes on when you don't turn your car off. And so that would be like an energy-efficient thing, and Sustainable Highland Park will be working on that. The other resolution that you're taking up, which is one that I put before you, and I appreciate that you're considering it, and I hope it passes tonight, it is a resolution which calls for the governor to put a moratorium on all new fossil-fuel infrastructure projects. We feel that this is really essential to do, because the additional, if they were to permit all these power plants and compressors and pipelines, we would be adding about 33% to our already high greenhouse gas emissions. So I'm looking forward to you passing it tonight, and just to encourage the governor to be brave. There have been other moratoriums throughout the state's history, and this one would really say, before you permit any new infrastructure, we also need regulations on how much greenhouse gas exists and a reduction over time, so that we can meet both the governor's goals and the Paris Climate Agreement goals, and trying to survive. The other thing is, what was the final thing? There was one more thing that we wanted to talk about, and I'm blanking on it. But, oh yeah, the government energy aggregation. I remembered. I was just in Monroe, Monroe Township, talking to their energy, their environmental commission, and their councilperson and town manager, because I have gotten a lot of contact from other towns and municipalities that want to implement a bag ban. So I went down there to talk to them about it and how to begin. They are also a Silver Certified Sustainable Jersey Town, so they're out there. And they actually said they've been doing this government energy aggregation, or local government energy aggregation, for several cycles, and it's been very successful, and they're very happy doing it. And this is what you're going to begin a discussion about, where the town buys for the residents, and it's an opt-out if people don't want to be included in it. They also, they told me, I'm just going to throw this out, that there is a municipal buying block also. It's the New Jersey SEM? I don't know if you know, but there are towns that go in, and they buy a higher percentage of renewable at a better rate. So I'll pass that along to you, and you might want to take that up as well, for your municipal buildings. So that's my minute, it was five minutes, but you know, there's a lot going on. We had, Abby is here, and we had a clothing swap this summer, which, you know, is based on the reuse and don't throw out, and you know, and a sustainable principle, and there's just a lot going on there. There's issues about pesticides in our county parks, and other things that are coming up that people are coming to us about, and so that's exciting, even though that's not your purview. You know, there are people concerned about what's going on in the parks in terms of their lawn management. So thank you, thank you for taking it up, being very supportive always of the work that Sustainable Highland Park does, and I hope we move, we make progress, because we need it.
Thank you, Tina, excellent report.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held April 2nd, 2019, and April 16th, 2019, as distributed?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go into our council reports now, and I'm looking down to my left, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Very brief, though. October is going to be Fire Prevention Month, and because we have been having some series of fire in town, we're going to be doing some educational workshops. Stay posted, we'll be sending out information as to when these workshops are going to happen, and we're encouraging residents, all of Highland Park residents, to come and to learn some techniques, and what to do, and what to do and what not to do during fires. So that's going to be in October, and we'll be sending out information through NEXO, through email, and we'll also have information on the fire department website. As we move into the season where all the kids are back in school and it gets darker, we're encouraging everyone to please use the sidewalks for the students, especially, please look up when crossing the streets, and for everyone that drives in town, be careful, slow down in our town, we want everyone to be safe. We've gotten a lot of complaints about people speeding through our town, so just keep everyone safe and slow down. We all live here, we want to get home safely to our families. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I would just like to add, congratulations to our police department and detectives for the wonderful work they did in actually capturing and solving the myriad burglaries that were happening. Sorry?
Yeah, that were happening.
Yes.
Chief?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of things I wanted to bring up.
Microphone, microphone.
Microphone, microphone, right. We had a rash of commercial burglaries in the beginning of the summer. We ended up catching the guy who did it. We closed six burglaries in our town, and closed to 12 between Edison and North Brunswick. Our detectives did a great job, you know, locking down the scene, taking evidence, putting things together, and making a really good arrest. So I believe the county's holding him without bond, he's going to stay in jail till trial. That's pretty big for how many he did. But we have been getting hit with daytime residential burglaries. Please, lock your doors, lock your windows, lock your cars. All of these residential burglaries have been gone through open doors and open windows in the homes. No forced entry, the windows are open, whoever it is they are, they're going through the windows, they're going through open doors. Please lock your doors and windows, all right?
Chief, please speak into the microphone.
Please lock your doors and windows. One other thing I wanted to bring up, street fair on the 22nd, as usual, the road will be closed from early morning to the afternoon. The street fair hours are 11 to 4, and it's Sunday, the 22nd. And finally, schools back in session, parking is at a premium during drop-off and pickup. Please obey the parking laws. Please be courteous and kind to the people who live around the houses and around the schools there. Don't block driveways, let people in and out of their homes become an issue around a couple of the schools. I know it's the first couple of weeks, new parents, new kids are getting used to it, but we really have to be conscientious of how we're impacting the rest of the neighborhood when we just park our cars and bring our kids in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Just one item, I just want to remind everyone that the next Library Board of Trustees meeting will take place in the meeting room at the library on Monday, September 23rd, beginning at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, welcome back from your vacation.
Thank you. I just have a few items as well. The fall over at the rec center, fall programming has begun this month. Registration is online, highlandparkrec.com. And also, if you qualify for free or reduced lunch, you also qualify for our free assistance for our youth programs. Please stop over at our rec center for more details, and also, rec is hiring seasonal employees. You can find the application at hpborough.com. On September 20th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we will have our special brain health work. It is free and open to the community. On September 25th, join us for our Middlesex County Senior Walk at Roosevelt Park in Edison, 10:00 AM to 1:00, and transportation will be provided to all. And then our fall course of AARP Driver Safety is a two-part session, will be held Wednesday, September 25th, and Wednesday, October 2nd. You must attend both sessions for your discount and certificate. At the end of the course, you will receive a certificate that you can give to your insurance company for a discount. Over in Arts Commission, the Band-Aid bench is almost finished, and we will have the revealing at Arts Center Park, so please stop by if you're attending the festival. And then Arts Commission is also applying for another grant to Middlesex County to support a spoken workshop for February through April 2020. And then I also wanted to mention that September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I also wanted to wish our community that celebrating a wonderful Rash Hashana, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, just a brief one, thank you, Mayor. Highland Park Gives a Hoot is in need of some new volunteers. In particular, they will have a booth at Arts in the Park, if you are interested in volunteering for Highland Park Gives a Hoot in that, and then also, for some of their food pickups during the week, on Tuesdays between 6:00 AM and 12:00 noon, on various Tuesdays, they need people to run to the county and McFoods to pick up some of the food that they are delivering. If you are interested, available, and can help with Highland Park Gives a Hoot, please contact Michael Buckman, he's at michael.buckman.mb@gmail.com. And so it's a great organization, and if you do have some extra volunteer time, they certainly could use it. I also just wanted to give a shout-out to some pretty amazing millennials that we have in Highland Park. Insider NJ is an online newspaper that puts out lists every year of the top variety of different people involved in politics and involved in New Jersey, and we have Ashton Burrell and Stephanie Kim Cho Han, who are both recognized as millennials to watch in the top 100 in the state of New Jersey. So I think we can be very proud of both of them, so thank you very much.
Telling my age.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Wachovitz, do you have a report?
Yes, I'll try to be brief, because I've lost my voice. Following in what Tina Weishouse was talking about, sustainability, and our efforts to reuse and recycle and upcycle, I'd like to thank Ballard Hutkin and her staff at Century 21, and our Main Street for organizing another great townwide garage sale this past weekend. Of course, my kids found a bunch of stuff, so I have more than I had expected in my house now, but I guess I can get ready for next year's sale. I know that people got a lot of great things. We saw two saddles that were for sale, one on the south side and one on the north side. We should have a contest next year for the strangest things that people end up buying. Anyway, thanks to all those who helped make it a great success. And the other wonderful thing about this garage sale is how much socializing y'all get to do by walking around and seeing your neighbors and your friends, so it's really, it's always a fun time for us. Last week, we had a marathon planning board meeting, it ended after midnight, but we approved the plans to build an apartment building at 31 River Road, which was the former medical building, which stood there for about 50 years. We're delighted to work with the developer, Garden Homes, who have designed a very nice rental apartment building. There will be 40 units, they'll have bike parking, and they will also manage the building as they do in several locations throughout the state. So they've got a lot of experience, and we're delighted that they could build such a high-quality building here in Highland Park. And the most important thing, because it's fall, and so there's something going on every weekend in Highland Park, and this Sunday, Arts in the Park, from 11:30 to 4:30. Our Arts in the Park is one of the few true juried art festivals in the state of New Jersey. Don't miss it, bring your friends, bring your out-of-town friends, my cousin's coming from Manhattan to walk through. So enjoy, and thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No.
No, I was going to do him before me.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Just a couple of items, sorry. I wanted to just remind everybody that the water and sewer bills are out, so if you didn't get one, or you can't find one, you can always look up your bill online, payments are due the end of the month, so just wanted to make sure, because I know that's one of those bills that seems to slip through the cracks of my mailbox as well. The other thing I wanted to first thank, the members of the community who came out for our community meeting around our master plan on September 10th, but also, for those of you who missed it or didn't get enough of it, I wanted to make sure you knew we had another one coming on October 2nd at 7:00 PM over at the community center. So I would really encourage everybody to put that on the calendar and find some time, because the conversation and the input has been really helpful to the process. But we are looking to adopt our master plan reexamine report by the end of the year, so we're really looking to pick up as much input along the way as we can. And the online survey will be live, I believe, at least through mid-October, at publicinput.com/hilandpark, and we'll be sharing that on the website and through emails, and so if you can't make the meetings, that's another way to contribute. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had that, and this is the flyer, see if George can pick that up, so you could see that around town, and make sure to please pass that along to your neighbors and friends in town as well, just wanted to make sure. And lastly, I think I forgot to mention it at the last meeting, and I'm not sure if Councilman George did, but our Public Works Superintendent is going to be retiring this month, and I felt remiss in not mentioning that prior, and we are doing a search at the moment, so that's been up on our website, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, as Don Risch has been a part of our team for over 40 years, and so that's going to be a big transition for us. So I wanted to make sure the public who may have had the opportunity to work with him was aware of that.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Council President, do you have a report?
I do briefly, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Tina Weishouse and her committee, the Sustainable Highland Park, for the work that they did with regard to the two resolutions. Tina's discussed them more at length, as well as the work, but the work that goes on at those meetings and in between those meetings is very substantial. The members have a lot to do with the actual drafting of the resolutions, the suggestions. There are a number of projects that will be going on this year, and then there are some occasional ones, as I talked about at the last meeting, Abby's 0 to 5T clothing exchange for a very short, almost impromptu project was pulled together extremely well and very well attended. So somewhere else on the agenda tonight, you know that one of our main focuses going forward for the next probably two years is going to be water and sewer. We have an agenda, we've actually started putting our money where our mouth is, there are leak repairs for borough-owned pipes at various locations, we are putting out to bid tonight to start those repairs, even as we work on a more major and overall plan. We're not waiting, we're getting started. There's going to be an ad hoc committee as well, of local commercial establishments involved in the water and sewer business who have anecdotal evidence of other leaks, so that we can hopefully avoid a lot of expert fees, at least for diagnosing those as well. I'd like to thank Main Street Highland Park for the townwide yard sale that Councilwoman Wachovitz mentioned. I think the idea of the strangest thing sold is a good idea. I looked this morning at the boxes in front of my house that have been sitting there since Saturday, there is a genuine 1969 avocado-colored fondue pot, and skewers, and burner, still sitting in the box, no one wants them. But in relation with that, last year, we changed our bulk trash pickup, we canceled the August summer pickup, and we moved it to the week after the townwide yard sale, because it's just like me, we tend to leave our unsold stuff on the street as well. And, I'm sorry, Thursday is going to be the south side. Today, they were working on the north side in Triangle, but also, the crews are still out, because we really can't accomplish everything in one day. There's a lot of bulk trash, I think we did 38 cubic tons last year, which is a lot of trash, so that they are working all during the week, when the crews finish up with trash pickup, they're back out on the street doing yard pickup. We found that we were able to accomplish 99.9% of the pickups with only a four-day week last week, so we anticipate it all to be done. We have an important water sewer workshop coming up. You've been hearing a lot about the plans that we've been talking about, I've been bringing it up at every meeting, discussing with our consultant, closing in on our water and sewer problems. We're picking up a lot of the smaller pieces, even some of the bigger pieces, but in the overall comprehensive plans that our consultant has come up with, we're going to be discussing them at a workshop meeting, that he will be presenting primarily to the mayor and council, the results of his report, which has been more refined, and also with a PowerPoint. A lot of the issues are somewhat complex to understand. There are four proposals for a town of about our size with our system, he'll be presenting them for our further review, but the public is invited to this, let me make clear, the public's invited to this to hear the presentation. We're going to be having additional ones as well, as we go forward, even into 2020, because this is probably one of the more complex questions that we've dealt with over the last five years, and I invite everybody to come. The STACK meeting is on...
(inaudible).
The mayor's asked me to remind everybody, as I said, the presentation is primarily for mayor and council, it will be an explanation as well as an update for some of the questions that we asked to have clarified and presented. We want to make sure that the public is involved, so we will be having that workshop open to everybody, there will be questioning, as there is at every public meeting as well. Again, the STACK is meeting next Wednesday at 8:00, at the Public Works meeting this Thursday at 8:30 AM, which is an open meeting, but for the work group for Public Works, will be discussing their recommendations for an ordinance change on the tree ordinance, which governs the removal and planting of trees, and they've made some recommendations that's been around for over 20 years, and there are some changes that need to be made in accordance with our experience, and also recommendations from the state DEP. And I would like to just end by thanking Don Risch for his years of service as Superintendent of Public Works, as well as his other roles, starting at the bottom and working way up for some, I think, 41 years, dedicated to Highland Park. I wish him well on his retirement, and I thank him for his service. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you want to talk about the land?
That's the water main repairs?
Yeah.
I didn't address that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I usually don't give very long reports, but please bear with me tonight, there are a couple of things I want to make sure you understand. First of all, tonight, those residents who were able to join us for our 6:30 agenda meeting, saw us meeting in here. Residents who closely follow the mayor and borough council, how we conduct our business, will notice that there's been a significant change, and that we intend on making it a... making it an ongoing change. For as far back as I can remember, since I was first involved in attending council meetings on that side of the, of the room, which probably goes back to the 1990s, the mayor and council conducted their agenda meeting, which is the meeting before the formal council meeting, at which they discussed the business planned for the council meeting that night, so that if anyone had any questions on the things coming up on the agenda, they could ask them. The meeting after the formal council meeting, this being the formal council meeting, where the, where we review business planned for upcoming council meetings, that is, used to be conducted in the Berman Council Chamber, Conference Room, and will now continue here after a break when we're done with this meeting. So we'll no longer be going into the room that you may know as the Fish Bowl. We made this change in response to constructive feedback from residents, and while the agenda and conference meetings have always been open to the public, and residents and visitors have frequently participated in those meetings, the size of the Fish Bowl Conference Room just does not allow for many people to fit in there comfortably. So it has had the unintended effect of discouraging people from participating in those portions of the public meeting. I'm grateful to the residents who pointed this out to us. Fostering greater transparency has been one of the foremost goals of, of this administration since shortly after I was elected mayor in 2014. That goal is what has led us to hold more open public forums, to start my monthly addresses at the community center, and to use our email, website, and social media channels to more robustly share information with the public. The change in agenda and conference meeting locations, starting tonight, is part of that effort, and we do this so that you, the residents of Highland Park, can be better informed and better engaged in the work of our town. Later tonight, as we have been for many weeks now during our work session, the council will be discussing the status of a resolution on antisemitism. The reason we began these discussions is because I was concerned, and I am still concerned, about the rise of antisemitism and antisemitic incidents in Highland Park. Clearly, this is an issue we can do something about. It is your governing body's responsibility to address the rise of the number of these incidents felt by Jewish members in our community, and to make our community safe. But to date, no action has been taken. That is because a simple resolution to combat antisemitism on our streets has been through many drafts and iterations. Currently, there are at least six different versions circulating around the council. There's one, there are a couple by some of our council members. There are two versions the ADL drafted, the Anti-Defamation League, because of their concern for our community. Another was drafted by a few residents who met with me and who are affiliated with a group called CJJ PAC. And another version has been submitted by the Human Relations Commission, the borough entity that is charged with the mission of uniting all parts of our community and ensuring they are all feeling safe, welcome, understood, and contributing parts of our overall municipality. All of these versions are drafts. Make no mistake, I stand firmly against the pernicious acts of antisemitism that have been plaguing Highland Park in recent months. I want us to marshal the will and the resources to do all we can to defeat this scourge and discourage people, including our younger adolescent population, from considering anti-Jewish comments or actions as anything normal, amusing, or reasonable. The problem is that we are spending so much time talking about a resolution and not acting on a resolution. What continues to hold up this resolution is the inclusion of language that addresses geopolitical issues and asks the borough to condemn specific activist groups whose actions and rhetoric are considered antisemitic by most mainstream Jewish organizations. These activist groups are on college campuses and in select communities across the US, not in Highland Park in any large numbers. I see already how deeply divisive any mention of this group in the proposed resolutions against antisemitism can be. I've heard from community members with deep concerns about a resolution that seems to discourage types of political speech, even if that speech is deeply distressing to me and others. I've also privately, heard privately from members of different synagogues and from varying degrees of Jewish, people of varying degrees of Jewish observance, including a Congressional Orthodox Rabbi, who've expressed serious misgivings about this segment of the proposed resolution against antisemitism. They feel their concerns are being dismissed by the louder voices in town. Antisemitism must be addressed here in Highland Park. I am calling upon the council to stop going back and forth on this issue. Take the next few weeks, however long it, you need, but soon, to firm up a resolution that we can all agree on. Heed the advice of the ADL, the CJJ PAC, and your Human Relations Commission, all whose proposals require in-depth education for our residents and students about antisemitism, its history, and the subversive techniques used in the 21st century. Finally, I want to thank the Human Relations Commission for their tireless work on this issue and their commitment to eradicating antisemitism in Highland Park through education. I also want to thank our borough council members, who have put in so much time discussing the issue of antisemitism in Highland Park. But there's been enough talking. We have at least six versions of this resolution floating around amongst council members. Read them all, include the best elements of each, come up with one final version that your Health and Human Services Subcommittee can recommend to council, and take a vote. We have to stop antisemitism in Highland Park. Thank you. Okay, folks, we're going to open for our first public discussion. Let me just remind everyone here that this is, this session is limited to 15 minutes, so I can only have five people speaking three minutes each, and we're going to have to time everyone. Some of you have been through this with us before, so you know what it's like. I'm going to ask you, please, to leave your comments at three minutes, so that more people can speak. Go ahead.
John Kovak, North Third Avenue. Before I start my prepared remarks, I would like to remind everyone that BDS groups are in this town. They're moving into our library. They are strong-arming our library, and for us not to take a stand against that is a huge mistake. It was said by certain BDS supporter at the last council meeting, that I speak with a type of self-righteous hatred that creates lynch mobs. But I do not speak with hatred, and I do not advocate violence. I speak with anger, and I have a right to be angry at the insidious antisemitism brought to Highland Park by Jewish Voice for Peace. I find particularly ironic my critics' reference to a lynch mob, because it brought to mind an incident known as the Ramallah lynching, that took place in October 2000, shortly after the beginning of the Second Intifada, when two captured Israeli soldiers were lynched by a Palestinian mob. There is an infamous photo of this event, which the Palestinian Authority desperately tried to suppress. It shows one of the murderers gleefully holding up his bloodstained hands at the scene of the crime while the bloodthirsty crowd cheers below. This is the Intifada of Goldberg Baschi's book, P is for Palestine, that the BDS group Jewish Voice for Peace is foisting on the preschoolers of Highland Park. At the last meeting, I explained that one manifestation of antisemitism is an unhinged narrative that accuses Jews of crime for which they are not only innocent but are the victims. This is such an example that a BDS advocate likens me to the instigator of a lynch mob. This is a projection of guilt onto a defender of Israel's right to exist as a Jewish state. It is analogous to the lie that Israel, rather than defending its citizens from suicide bombers, rockets, and knife-wielding killers, is out for Palestinian blood for the sake of murder itself. This is a projection onto the victim of the murderous wish that Israel be overrun and wiped out by those who seek to destroy it. So I offer a challenge to BDS supporters here in opposition to the proposed resolution condemning BDS antisemitism. Say clearly, without obfuscation and weasel words, that Israel has the absolute right to exist as a Jewish state, just as Saudi Arabia, Iran, Pakistan, Jordan, Syria, and many others exist as Islamic states without question. Let the BDS supporters distinguish themselves from terrorist groups that support them, such as the Popular Front for Liberation of Palestine, because otherwise BDS demands everything from Israel and offers in return only death. And not only is their ultimate goal extermination of Israel, but the history of their cause has been nothing more than incitement of violence rather than peace, and the claim that BDS supports nonviolent means is a grotesque, shameful lie.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Ira Mintz. I live at 143 North Fifth Avenue. I'm here to support our council adopting an antisemitism resolution, a resolution opposing antisemitism, but to oppose our council aligning with the Trump administration and its condemnation of supporters of the BDS movement as antisemitic. Once again, I'm not here to argue for or against BDS, the Boycott, Divestment, Sanctions Movement. We have some residents who think that anti-Zionism is the same as antisemitism. We have some residents who think that anti-Zionism isn't the same as antisemitism. But it's not the role of our government, our government officials, to use their political power to condemn either party's speech, or my speech, or the speech of anyone else in our community. There are Palestinians and there are Israelis who oppose a two-state solution. That's not antisemitism. There is much room for debate over Israeli politics. In fact, the Israelis are fighting over their politics as we speak. There's much room for debate and the right, over the Israeli politics and the rights of Palestinians and the rights of Israeli Jews, but none of that has anything to do with antisemitism in Highland Park and what should be our borough's commitment to protecting the rights and safety of its Jewish residents. We should be supporting free speech in our community, not siding with those on the right who pretend to champion free speech, but then seek to silence the voices of those who advocate for the nonviolent BDS movement. Our borough government officials should not be taking sides in that debate and should not be risking the cost and the publicity, and there will be publicity, of the inevitable lawsuit that will be filed challenging any borough condemnation of the exercise of free speech rights. We live in a country where one political party is inciting white nationalists to shoot up our synagogues. We need to unite as residents of Highland Park. I'm here opposing the idea that our borough should take any action that will divide our community rather than unite our community. So I urge the council to adopt a unifying resolution condemning antisemitism and not to inject the complicated and divisive politics of BDS.
Thank you.
Jeff Bordaro, I live on Wayne Street. First of all, I really want to thank the mayor and the council for holding the agenda meeting, for holding the agenda meeting in, in this room and for holding the conference meetings going forward in this room. I think it really sets the right tone, and I really appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor. Along the same lines, I, I've been on vacation. I did not know all of this was necessarily going on. I do have opinions about the antisemitism resolution as it's been described in your comments, but in the interest of transparency, if there are six drafts of potential resolutions of this kind of public interest floating around the council, I think the logical thing would be to put those drafts on the borough website, so that somebody like me who's about to go to a meeting can easily access it and figure out what the heck we're actually talking about. I would say, I think it would be really odd to have an antisemitism resolution that just singles out one group that the borough identifies as an enemy of the Jewish people without referencing every other possible group that does that. I know that the borough did a resolution recently about the rights of refugees and immigrants, and we didn't add to that resolution that we're condemning the Republican Party, who's victimizing a lot of those people, despite the fact that there are a lot of members of that party who say hateful things and do hateful things. If there was a resolution like that, I'm an ardent Democrat, I would still absolutely oppose such a resolution, and for the same reasons I would oppose a resolution that condemns antisemitism and adds in that we're condemning a, a movement of people who hold diverse beliefs and have some things in common, but some of whom express hateful thoughts. I just don't think it's appropriate to, to make an enemies list for the borough. I think we should focus on the problem that we have in Highland Park, which seems to have nothing to do with BDS or, or Israel in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Gordon, 207 South Fifth Avenue. I have prepared remarks, but I wanted to address something that this town was targeted by a BDS-supporting organization because of the large Jewish population, because they knew the reaction that would happen and would give them good press. That happened with the library. So it's not abstract, we're picking one Jewish, one antisemitic organization out of many. If the Ku Klux Klan had planned a reading for children in our library, I think we all would condemn racism and the Ku Klux Klan specifically, and not every other racist group. We were targeted by BDS. BDS is not a anti-Zionist movement that happens to be pro-peace. They are an anti-two-state solution. The founder has said BDS does not want a two-state solution. They want a one-state minus Jewish residents. They pick out Jewish businesses and the business towns in Israel to boycott, not the Muslim and Christian towns. So it's not just against Israel or the Middle East or the Palestinian territories. It's strictly an antisemitic movement. It's recent variation, the centuries-old anti-Jewish boycotts that the Arab powers embraced for three decades before 1948, the establishment of the State of Israel. This goes back beyond politics. This goes back beyond modern-day Zionism. There was a massacre in Hebron, where I think 26 people were killed, before there was a territory, before there was a state, before there was economic boycotting. This is the latest manifestation of that. They are opposing coexistence between Israeli and Palestinians. The BDS movement shut down SodaStream Factory, which employed hundreds of Palestinians in their factory, and they had to lose their job and move to the Negev, because the BDS movement was trying to help them. How do you help someone by getting rid of their jobs? They discourage Palestinians from negotiating with Israel. It cynically convinces Israelis the conflict cannot be solved, and we're gonna crush you economically with sanctions and boycotting and divestment. It damages US interests. It's not just a Trump agenda. The BDS movement started way before President Trump even thought about running. It's a Congress agenda, because the local Congress just passed it. It's a New Jersey State agenda, New Jersey passed it. 22 cities in New Jersey passed it with anti-BDS wording. There's been no Outlash, there's been no Pragms, there's been no stirring of antisemitism because we stood up to antisemitism. They called it for what it was. BDS, as the ADL says, and the country of Germany... BDS, as the ADL says, and the country of Germany you just pronounced, BDS is antisemitic. And to try to whitewash it and try to include other movements is just doing that, it's whitewashing and denying it. Again, I appreciate the council's sincerity, I appreciate the council hearing from me at times personally through emails, and I do appreciate the seriousness that you're taking it, but the mayor, you're right, it's time to act. This is dragged on too long, and it's nitpicking on terminology. This should, this is, to me, an embarrassment for Highland Park. We should have had this voted on tonight at the council meeting. I plead with the council, at your Green Session, vote to put it on the agenda, let the public hear the debate next meeting, and let's vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have to move on.
Good evening. My name's Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. Tonight, I would like to bring out to everyone sitting here, everyone watching on TV, this Friday, across our great nation, every state, every city, every American Legion post, every Veterans of Foreign Wars post, will be honoring our missing-inaction, our POWs, and I would like to, everyone, to take a moment to give honor to your families, your sons, your daughters, your husbands. Right now, approximately, there's 175,000 veterans that are still missing in action. And this Friday, we will be honoring them. And in closing, I would like to take a moment to give our sincere appreciation to all the Gold Star Mothers and Wives and Families of the Veterans who have made the supreme sacrifice. I know only too well what I'm saying is the truth. To all the Gold Star Mothers, I salute you. Thank you.
This will be the last, Mark, one second. Mark will be the last speaker at this session. We have another public comment session that follows some borough business, so if you can stay till that portion, you'll be able to speak then.
Thank you. Mark Colton, 41 North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park. It's interesting, when Jews were being blown up in pizza stores and buses in the Second Intifada, Israelis defending themselves were called Nazis. Interesting, when Israel put up a fence to protect its Jewish civilians under almost daily terrorist attacks, it was called an apartheid state. And Jews outside of Israel who cried out against this terrorism was called Nazi sympathizers, in fact, some people here in Highland Park. Interesting, Jews who were the target of the gas chambers are attacked for waving the Holocaust flag and having due loyalty, and sometimes even by Holocaust deniers. Fascinating. Interesting, this is the messaging of the vocal BDS movement, who has come to Highland Park, founded and led by individuals who are or were former members of PFLP, a U.S.-recognized terrorist organization, or other Palestinian propaganda organizations, tactics. The BDS organization's fellow travelers are increasingly trying to drive McCarthyism movement from the left, questioning the motives of Jews in America, including those in Highland Park. Fascinating, vocal neo-Nazi groups from America to Germany and Austria have joined forces with the BDS movement as a tool for their antisemitic diatribe. This language is interchangeable. Jews who support Jews after 6 million have died are part of an international cabal. We hear it here in Congress sometimes. Incredible, some of these pernicious attacks are now coming from a small but vocal group of left-leaning congresspeople, supporters of the BDS movement. Pause. The BDS movement was finally identified as antisemitic, and a bipartisan congressional resolution, something unheard of in today's politics, saying so was overwhelmingly approved. Shocking, this truth seems to be a challenge for Highland Park, which projects as its core as being a wholesome and healthy environment for all its residents, free of hate, bias, and discrimination, now struggles to issue a resolution against antisemitism and the BDS movement, although I take off my hat to the mayor right now for her very wonderful speech. The BDS movement would have everyone think that the power tracts of antisemitism, anti-Zionism are coincidental, and it's only the Zionists and their Nazi sympathizers that are a problem. Bashi had made that comment to one of our citizens here in Highland Park. We say anti-Zionism is pure antisemitism, where anti-Zionism is only a form of weaponizing antisemitism, and the BDS movement is its propaganda arm. Let's define what we're talking about. Antisemitism, a delusional hatred of Jews, Judaism of the Jewish people. Zionism, the self-determination of Jewish people in their ancient homeland of Israel. Israel is the spiritual home of the Jewish people. Are Christians to be demonized for having a spiritual home in Jesus or Catholics or Vatican? How do they equate? It is unique act of anti-Zionism that makes it different from other prejudices. Equating the antisemitism of the past millennia are now targeting the Jewish state. It has an obsession of blaming Jews of crimes in which they're not only innocent but are the victims, and regardless of whether they are victims, they deserve it.
Mark, we're going to have to...
Sure.
Cut it.
Holding Israel and the Jewish population to stand as no other group or movement have, are held against.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're going to have to go on to borough business now, and then we will come back for more public comment. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the Bond Ordinance repealing, Bond Ordinance Number 181966 and 181967, and providing for the replacement and rehabilitation of water mains, interconnections, and water meters for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond Ordinance repealing, Bond Ordinance Number 181966 and Bond Ordinance 181967, finally adopted on September 4, 2018, and providing for the replacement and rehabilitation of water mains, interconnections, and water meters in the borough of Highland Park and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey. Appropriating 3 million therefore from water and sewer utility of the borough and authorizing the issuance of 3 million bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Sorry. Has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. Affidavits of publication heretofore on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
You'll note that the title of this is to repeal a bond for water and sewer. This is an old proposal, which was related to our request to the Infrastructure Bank for no-cost loans which would roll into bonding. That program is no longer viable because Infrastructure Bank is not making the financing. You'll see in the next one, we are refinancing the projects that we've been talking about. So we're not canceling anything, we're just changing the plan. Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the Bond Ordinance providing for the inspection and survey of the sanitary sewer system for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond Ordinance providing for the inspection and survey of the sanitary sewer system in the borough of Highland Park and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating 320,000 therefore from the water sewer utility of the borough and authorizing the issuance of 320,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration on, passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Also moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Again, this is the second part of our first step in planning. This is for financing some engineering costs as well as some testing and repairs, as you'll see as we go along. Thank you. Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt items number 13 through 22 on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Especially on this, as we said, we're moving along with the Plan Resolution 273, is for six identified leak replacements on our public water lines at various locations. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
I am appointing Earl Smith as a crossing guard. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into our next public discussion session, so anyone who did not have a chance to speak, now is your time to come up. Please state your name and address. Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan Mondro, 25 Marshall Drive.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Daniel Mondro, 25 Marshall Drive.
In Highland Park?
In Edison. I first want to commend Honorable Mayor and the council members for bringing up the question of antisemitism in Highland Park. It is an ongoing problem, and is an increasing problem. New Jersey has prided itself on its ethnic diversity, but it seems as if ethnic diversity applies only when Jews are not involved. I've said many times to different people in different venues, antisemitism is like pornography. We can't always define it, but we know it when I see it. This pertains particularly to the anti-BDS movement. So it pays to make a number of important points, and I'll try to be quick and not belabor it. First of all, the democratic Jewish state of Israel is a key ally and strategic partner of the United States. Since Israel's founding in 1948, Congress has repeatedly expressed, "Our nation, the United States' unwavering commitment to the security of Israel as a Jewish and democratic state." Number three, various groups and movements target Israel, the only democracy in the Middle East, with the aim of excluding the State of Israel and the Israeli people from the economic, cultural, and academic life of the rest of the world. The Global Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement, commonly known as the BDS Movement, is one of several recent political movements that undermines the possibility for a negotiated solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict by demanding concessions of one party alone and encouraging the Palestinians to reject negotiations in favor of international pressure. Next, the founder of the global BDS movement, Omar Barghouti, has denied the right of the Jewish people in their homeland, saying, "We oppose a Jewish state in any part of Palestine. No Palestinian, rational Palestinian, not a sellout Palestinian will ever accept a Jewish state in Palestine." This is said by the founder of BDS. Next, the global BDS movement targets not only the Israeli government, but also Israeli academic, cultural, and civil society institutions, as well as individual Israeli citizens of all political persuasions, religions, and ethnicities, and in some cases, even Jews of other nationalities who support Israel. Next, the global BDS movement does not recognize, and many of its supporters explicitly deny, the right of the Jewish people to national self-determination. Finally, in contrast to protest movements that have sought racial justice and social change, the global boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement targeting Israel is not about promoting coexistence, civil rights, and political reconciliation, but what does it do? It questions and undermines the very legitimacy of Israel and its people. I found it very interesting in listening to the comments earlier this evening about banning plastic bags and straws in Highland Park. One should know that at the last AIPAC meeting, which took place in March, an Israeli entrepreneur, a young woman advocated the use of supermarket bags which are biodegradable, made from apple peels. If the BDS movement were to succeed, the world would be deprived of the many innovations and technological advances that Israel has provided to the world. If that's the case, don't use Waze, don't use cell phones, don't use Mobileye, and use none of the medications that Israel has made available to this country, Highland Park, or anywhere on the globe, from Teva, which is one of the major generic pharmaceutical corporations. Thank you.
Ashton Burrell, South Eighth Avenue, Chairman of the Highland Park Human Relations Commission. The Human Relations Commission came to a consensus that, as a whole, we voted to create our own resolution. There were numerous resolutions presented to us, and we respect each and every person that presented one to us, so we came with our own, which we wanted to present to the council officially tonight. I received numerous emails and countless conversations with individuals, and I'm also reminded of the mission of the HRC, which one of it is to, "We shall attempt to foster through community effort or otherwise goodwill cooperation and consolation among the groups and elements of the inhabitants of the borough that will aid in eliminating all types of discrimination." With that being said, the HRC does condemn antisemitic behavior. The HRC condemns any type of behavior that is a threat to anybody in this town. So if it is one of our Jewish brothers and sisters that is hurt, we come in and we intervene. If it is one of our black brothers and sisters that are hurt, we jump in and intervene. If it's one of our Asian brothers and sisters that are hurt, we jump in and intervene. And if it's one of our Muslim brothers and sisters, we jump in and intervene. If it's anyone that's in this town that's hurt, we jump in and intervene. We've missed a lot of situations in the past, and we hope that we don't in the future, but they always say the biggest room in the house is room for improvement. So with that being said, I hope you guys take a look at our resolution, and I hope that we can continue to build better bridges to lead into a better Highland Park.
Henry Shanzur, I'm a taxpayer.
We need your...
You have a problem? You have a problem?
Henry, Henry?
You really have a problem.
Henry, could you just state your address, please?
Okay. I'd like to start off by saying that I really appreciate what you, the mayor, said in opening this discussion, and I know that your heart is in the right place, and your heart is leading you, but I believe that there's a basic problem that we really have to face. And antisemitism has many colors and as many facets, but you just heard Dr. Mondro read articles which were presented in, which were an integral part of the U.S. Congressional Resolution. In view of the fact that Congress and many state legislatures, including ours, have passed extensive anti-BDS legislation and resolutions, why do we feel the need to add our voice? To me, and you, the mayor, articulated it, the reason is the recognition that there is a cancer of hatred and evil growing in our midst. Consequently, we have a moral imperative to speak up against the cancer of hatred and evil, and specifically sponsored by the BDS Movement and its supporters. The U.S. Congress, the New Jersey Legislature... The U.S. Congress, the New Jersey Legislature, and as mentioned already, 26 other state legislatures and numerous municipalities in New Jersey, and even the German Parliament, have passed clauses and resolutions that designate the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement against Israel as antisemitic. The German lawmakers denounced the BDS movements against Israel, describing its methods as antisemitic and reminiscent of Nazi-era calls to boycott Jews. In their resolutions, the Virginia lawmakers referred to the BDS movement as inherently antithetical and deeply damaging to the causes of peace, justice, equality, democracy, and human rights for all peoples in the Middle East. The BDS movement is racist and antisemitic, not because it criticizes Israel; most Israelis do it daily, but it is antisemitic to criticize only Israel and never any other country or entity. The BDS movement criticizes one nation and one nation only: Israel. BDS blames Israel, and only Israel, for the Arab-Israeli conflict. The BDS movement simply refuses to acknowledge any Arab aggression, misdeeds, or blame. Is there any doubt or question that the main plight of the Palestinians is due to their refusal to accept the U.N. Partition Plan in 1948 and the attack and the plan of the Palestinians and the Arab countries to destroy Israel in 1948? Having lost that war, there is a continued effort, and we've had the wars of 1956, 1967, 1973, attempting to destroy Israel. When Israel began a phased withdrawal from the West Bank in the mid-1990s, Palestinian terrorists, many of them backed by the Palestinian Authority, responded with a wave of violent suicide bombings that killed over 1,000 Israeli civilians. When Israel withdrew all of its soldiers and civilians from the Gaza Strip in 2005, rocket fire and terrorist attacks from Gaza into Israel dramatically increased and continue to this day. Again, withdrawal was not met with peace, but with more terror. If Israel's critics wanted to be fair, they would recognize that the Palestinian leadership has played a significant role in fueling this conflict. But BDS has no interest in being fair or objective. BDS prefers to blame Israel and only Israel. It is an insult to our intelligence and pure Orwellian double talk when BDS paints Israel as an apartheid state and a genocidal state, and itself as the protector of the Palestinian rights. Anybody who has been in Israel or knows anything about Israel knows that there are Jews and Arabs in the Israeli government. Arabs own and work in shops, malls, restaurants, and hospitals throughout the Jewish state. It doesn't take a genius to realize that this is not apartheid. Israel is a democracy, in fact, the only democracy in the Middle East, and calling Israel an apartheid state is racist, it is antisemitic, it is wrong, and it is just false. Israeli Arabs are full citizens, and today, coincidentally, there is an election in Israel, and Arab citizens are free to vote as they wish. The fact is that Israeli Arabs are the freest Arabs in the entire Middle East. This is not an exaggeration. In what Arab country are Arabs as free to vote and to participate in their government? More importantly, in what Arab country are Arabs as free to criticize their government as they are in Israel? If the BDS people were truly interested in Arab human and civil rights, they would devote at least some of their time to criticizing the many Arab countries that deny their citizens As to the claim that Israel is genocidal, it is a personal insult to me and to all those who lost parents and relatives who were murdered by the Nazis. Arabs, Muslims, Christians, transgenders can live anywhere in Israel and do not have to fear being harmed or killed. In sharp contrast, Jews fear for their lives while going through many Arab areas. Our community is diverse, and we are generally respectful of one another. Highland Park prides itself on the motto, "No aid here." BDS represents the direct opposite and the denial of the motto. I am speaking in my individual capacity, but I am certain that the overwhelming majority of the Highland Park, Edison community, Jewish and non-Jewish, would subscribe to the points I raised. Antisemitic, antisemitism, and rabid, senseless hatred cannot be accepted or fostered in any form. In memory of all those who were massacred due to hate speech and blind hatred, I ask you to do the right moral and ethical thing and speak up against BDS, including all those people who act in an antisemitic manner or in any manner that tend to cause hatred to be spewed from one group to another.
Thank you.
Monique Coleman, 407 Lincoln Avenue. First, I do want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for your statement regarding the meetings and the change that you decided to make to hold all the meetings here in Borough Chambers. I did arrive at C-PROC down to the Fishbowl, and I saw you all meeting in here, and I was pleasantly surprised that you responded to the concerns of residents. I do want to know what the plan is as far as minutes for these meetings are concerned and recording of the agenda and the conference meetings, mainly because 6:30 is a difficult time for people to work, maybe who work the 3:00 to 11:00 shift or don't get off work until 6:30, 7:00 o'clock, but still want to know what's happening in meetings. And I do know that in the past, 6:30 meetings have had discussions, they have had presentations, and I know for myself that I'm not always able to get here, so I would appreciate being able to access those meetings as fully as I'm able to access these meetings because they are televised and we get minutes as well. So I would like to know what the plans are in terms of making those other meetings, the 6:30 and then the post-7:00 meetings, fully accessible to the public, as are these regular meetings.
That's a very good question and something that we have to figure out here. I actually was having a talk with a man behind the camera earlier. I'm not sure, you know, how much time we can ask volunteers to give us for the television recordings, but we can certainly look into other options for recordings. We just haven't had a chance to make that, to really figure out how it's going to work, but we are looking into those things. Be happy to report back to everybody on the progress we make with that.
Thank you. And then my other comment was regarding Sustainable Highland Park update that Tina Whitehouse gave. I'm obviously very supportive of all of the work that Sustainable Highland Park does, and I'm very supportive of the plastic bag ban. I am also in special education, and I also work with individuals, children, and adults who have a wide range of disabilities, and one of the concerns in that community is about the plastic straws, which I'm sure you're possibly aware of. So I'm not really up on what this new state legislation will say about that, and maybe you are, but I do want to make sure that we are addressing that here as a community. We do have members of our community, as you know, who have special needs and should be able to use a straw that's accessible for them, and that's not a paper straw.
Phil may have more information on a statewide level.
Yeah, I let somebody else address the fact that Universal Access is also working on that, but when we originally, during some conversations about the background to the plastic bag ordinance, we had that discussion. We're aware that there are certain disabilities where straws have to be of a certain kind, and the paper does collapse. We're well aware of that. Universal Access is working on that particular piece of it. That will be included in any ordinance we do. It's also in two of the draft proposals before the Assembly for their general bill, whenever that gets moving.
Great, thank you. And then my last comment is about the antisemitism resolution. I do want to echo Jeff Verdar's question earlier about the public getting access to the actual resolution that will be considered well in advance of the vote, and I'm assuming that's going to happen. How would we, where would that be posted? Would it be on the Borough website, or is that how that works?
So generally, we would put it on the website. I think, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to have this, these many, many versions condensed into at least, you know, one, maybe two, that the council will consider. When we get down to something that's manageable, then we will clearly post it.
Okay, thank you, because there is so much here. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I know this is, we all are rallying around the need to speak to antisemitism and send the strong message, and I'm glad and willing and very happy to hear that you're doing that. I am concerned about the divisiveness of the BDS language in the resolution. I hear it here tonight, I've heard it before tonight, so as a resident, I would like to see a resolution that is more unifying, inclusive, and that does not divide the community, and that's not what we need. So I would be in fully support of the resolution going forward, speaking strongly against antisemitism, but not bringing into it the issue of the BDS movement, which is clearly something that's going to divide the members of the Jewish community as well as the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honey Wasowski, 54 North Seventh Avenue. BDS is merely a recent variant of centuries of anti-Jewish boycotts that the Arab powers embraced nearly three decades before the 1948 re-establishment of Jewish sovereignty. In this sense, efforts to subvert Israel as a sovereign Jewish state has not changed for antisemites over the past 2,000 years. The difference today is that the BDS campaign includes new, but equally radical actors, including far-left Muslim, Christian, and is even aligning, sharing talking points with the alt-right to delegitimize a Jewish state in the Middle East, the extent native population of what was historically called Judea and Samaria, not only in the time of Jesus, but over 1,000 years before that. Islamist groups have provided the ideological framework that energizes politically-minded Western Muslims, who are often the most vigorous and enthusiastic participants in BDS activities. These include Sunni and Shia, Muslim Brotherhood, supporters of violent jihad, and proponents of political campaigning, all having a theological opposition to a Jewish Israel's existence. Iran's supreme leader, Ayatollah al-Khamenei, issued a fatwa in May 2001 in which he stated, "The purchase of any item which helps strengthen Zionism is not permissible." Sheikh Yousaf al-Qadawi is one of the leading scholars of the global Muslim Brotherhood, the spiritual guide of Hamas, and a theological proponent and defender of suicide bombings in Israel, published a fatwa in 2002 on boycotting Israel as the enemies of Islam. Far-left revolutionaries, rejectionist Palestinians, the Palestinian Authority terrorist groups, Islamists have been foundational to the BDS movement. Rejectionist Palestinians and terrorist group members from the PFLP and others operating in the West are using the ploy of intersectionality to orchestrate the anti-Israel BDS campaign, tagging Israel as a Jewish apartheid state oppressing and colonizing people of color. Key entities include Hamas, the PFLP, the PA, Council of National Economic Forces in Palestine, the Muslim Brotherhood, identified as a terrorist organization in the Sunni world, various radical popular committees, and of course, the co-founders Omar Barghouti and Jamal Juma. The BDS movement is a subversive, antisemitic effort to penetrate Western mainstream professional groups, trade unions, leading academic institutions, the Highland Park Library, and the world of cultural icons to gain cultural cash and make its antisemitism respectable. Their true nature, terrorist founders and participants, and organization tentacles are in the graphic presented to the council. Recognizing BDS's sinister nature, Congress and the executive branch have labeled the BDS as an antisemitic movement. Politicians against BDS, Speaker Nancy Pelosi, we must also be vigilant against bigoted or dangerous ideologies masquerading as policy, and that includes BDS. Many of its supporters don't know or explicitly deny BDS does not recognize the right of Jewish people to national self-determination. BDS movement does not favor a two-state solution and undermines the possibility for a negotiated solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. New York City Mayor Bill de Blasio, "As a progressive Democrat and mayor of the most diverse city in the world, let me also say this: I deeply oppose the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement. I believe BDS is contrary to the progressive imperative to protect all oppressed people everywhere and always. BDS doesn't just seek to change a specific policy, it affronts the very notion of Israel as a guaranteed refuge for the Jewish people, and I fear that BDS could undermine the Israeli economy and thus undermine a two-state solution, a solution I believe is key to ending the suffering of Palestinians and Israelis alike, key to bringing peace to the region. So we must confront the threat to progress that is BDS." And Senator Chuck Schumer says, "We must not lose sight of the many forms that antisemitism can take. Antisemitism can sometimes be cloaked, hidden by certain movements that professional bias, but suspiciously hold Israel to a different standard than any other nation. There is no greater example than the effort to harm Israel through boycotts, divestment, and sanctions, the BDS movement. What is antisemitism? It's the double standard. Make no mistake, these boycott efforts have one goal, and only one goal, to gelatinize the state of Israel."
My name is Max Wasowski. I also live at 54 North Seventh Avenue with my wife, Honey. As usual, I'm one step behind her. The BDS movement is a worldwide effort to boycott and sanction Israel culturally and... The BDS movement is a worldwide effort to boycott and sanction Israel culturally, socially, and economically for allegedly violating the rights of Palestinians, wrongfully occupying their territory, and being an apartheid state. These allegations are absolutely false. Israel sits in the middle of a sea of autocratic, dictatorial, and theocratic states, where known flagrant offenses are part of the governmental structure or ordinary life. But Israel is the only democratic country in the Middle East and has the most inclusive minority participation in the area. Women, gays, and minorities live freely in Israel. About 20% of Israel's population are Arabs, who live, work, go to school, serve in the army, and serve in the parliament. Yet its haters try to label Israel as an apartheid state. I wonder how many Jews go to university, or serve in the army, or in the government in Jordan, Syria, Lebanon, Egypt, Saudi Arabia, Afghanistan, Iran, or Iraq. Yet only tiny Israel, the sole Jewish state in the entire world, has been singled out for condemnation. One doesn't have to be a rocket scientist to realize that something isn't kosher here. Fortunately, numerous governments have seen through this hypocritical charade and have passed various anti-BDS resolutions. These include the House of Representatives of the United States, about 20 state governments, and many U.S. cities. And also Germany, which knows a thing or two about antisemitism, passed an anti-BDS resolution and specifically called BDS antisemitic. Now what has all this have to do with Highland Park? Highland Park is a well-known liberal, very liberal town. It is diverse, all-inclusive, tolerant of minorities, and very social-minded. It proudly proclaims on so many lawns, quote, "Hate has no home here." One can presume that also encompasses the hate of antisemitism. The BDS movement is not really an economic tool, just another form of antisemitism, just cloaked in a different garb. Antisemitism and BDS, irrespective of its camouflage cover, are not different entities, but merely two sides of the same coin. One rarely sees a piece in the media today where BDS is mentioned without also seeing somewhere nearby the word antisemitism. They are one and the same. And as seen in other communities, once one form of antisemitism gains a foothold, other actions, for example, in schools, often follow, causing even greater discord. I therefore strongly urge the council to affirm on record that antisemitism and BDS have no place in quiet, peaceful, and tolerant Highland Park where hate has no home here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch. I live at 333 Felton Avenue here in town, and I'm nervous to speak on this topic because it's something that, you know, I have to admit, I'm not particularly well-versed in, but it's something that we have worked on as a member of the Human Relations Commission, as Chairman Ashton Burrell discussed. I had a tough time forming an opinion about the resolution that was proposed to us, because on the one hand, as a Jew personally, I have never been, I've been increasingly uncomfortable with antisemitism coming from my political brethren on the left, and I'm pretty left. I have become accustomed to expecting it from people from other political corners, sadly, in this day and age. The resolution that we were originally reviewing identified antisemitism from one political movement and from one political place, and because of that, it was clear that the resolution was retaliatory in nature, retaliatory from a really terrible set of circumstances that happened at the Highland Park Public Library, when an administrative check should have come in and addressed the situation regarding a children's book, P is for Palestine. Had the library had some type of check in order, maybe they would have, and this is not where I am, what my belief is necessarily, but maybe they would have looked at the book and said, you know what, this may not be a good idea for our community. You know, I think that's a fairly reasonable assessment. This book, it's not censorship. If we choose, if we make a programmatic decision and choose to not have the author here, well, maybe this book, even though some say it might be educational, is not a good idea here, and I would agree with that. That book is not a good idea here, and it's not a good idea in a lot of places. However, when the government begins assigning antisemitic labels to residents, specifically in the original resolution, it singled out very specific incidents that have happened at the high school, that somebody reading it would know that it is about them. That's where I become deeply, deeply uncomfortable. And at first, I looked at, I wondered why it didn't address antisemitism, I wondered why it didn't address antisemitism on the right, the white nationalist movement that's happening, our president, who enables antisemitic speech. The person most visible, the most visible antisemite in elected office, who is establishing a culture in America that makes it okay. I was wondering why that, why there was no mention of that until later iterations of the resolution, and it reminded me that this is retaliatory, and that's not what a governing body, and this is what I do know about governance, that is not what a governing body should do. That's not how a governing body should handle a problem. Chairman Burrell, and I actually want to pull this out one more time, referenced the mission of the Human Relations Commission, that the Human Relations Commission shall attempt to foster, through community effort or otherwise, goodwill, cooperation, and conciliation among the groups and elements of the inhabitants of the borough that will aid in eliminating all types of discrimination. The original resolution doesn't do that, in my opinion, and it potentially does the opposite. The governing body should not be making statements that are divisive and that take and that assign antisemitic labels to people that might not be antisemitic. And that was, and when I first had that thought, I was reminded of our president, who once famously said that there are good people on all sides. And the difference here, I think, is that this is coming from a governing body that is projecting, potentially, a resolution that is projecting a label on a certain portion of the population that I think is unfair, and I could use much stronger words, but I think it is wrong and dangerous for any resolution to single out residents of a certain political ideology. The speaker before referenced the inclusive communities resolution that the council passed in 2017. That could have easily identified any number of people, any number of leaders or movements that promoted or perpetuated or were purveyors of hate and intolerance, and it didn't, because the governing body needs to lead from a place of hope and not fear, not hatred, and certainly not retaliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Hanfling, 47 Leslie Street. I won't speak long, I want to bore you with, I don't want to repeat a lot of the comments, but actually, it's quite distressing.
Excuse me, I need to ask you, I'm sorry to interrupt, the clerk did not get your address we need.
Forty-seven Leslie Street. So it's quite distressing to hear a member of the Human Rights Council to, you know, talk about inclusiveness and political aspects and sit here and call the President of the United States the biggest antisemite in the country, or anybody from the right, or anybody from Republicans as antisemites, quite distressing. But I don't want to talk about the political aspects that you heard before. Basically, we all are against hate. We're against antisemitism and any anti-ethnic of all persuasions. So why should we single out BDS as part of this resolution, right? Let's just have an anti-hate resolution, and why include BDS? Because BDS covers itself. It's really surreptitiously saying that, well, you know, all we are is, we just want to be able to, you know, boycott, it's freedom of speech, we can do this, and we want to follow the model of South Africa, you know, in terms of boycotting. But it's quite different, because BDS specifically is antisemitic and singles out the state of Israel, and singles out the double standard. Now, without talking about politics and the state of Israel, we've heard, you know, different people talk about the states, the United States resolution, the German resolution about antisemitism specifically, and even the German Student Union declaring BDS an antisemitic movement as well. But the State Department issued a couple of years ago their definition of antisemitism, and they give about seven bullet points, but a couple of them specifically we can apply to the BDS movement, such as, one bullet point from the State Department Guide for Definition of Antisemitism is denying the Jewish people their right to self-determination by claiming that the existence of a state of Israel is a racist endeavor. We all know that BDS has done that multiple times. Another bullet point, applying double standards by requiring of any behavior not expected or demanded of any other democratic nation. So these are definitions, bullet points taken from the State Department definition of antisemitism. So the point is BDS is felt to be antisemitic, okay? And why specifically should the Highland Park Council include that is because, yes, we are against all hate of all kinds, okay? But BDS specifically is a point that people don't understand and want to cover themselves up, and that's why it deserves to be specifically mentioned in the resolution. Thank you.
First of all, thank you. My name is Audrey Mandrou. I live on 25 Marshall Drive, Edison, New Jersey. So I'm listening to everybody here, and my question is, I know what I think BDS is. I'm curious what BDS is in your mind? What exactly is it that we're talking about in everyone here's mind?
Well, we will be discussing where we are on all of this a little bit later.
Not what you think about it, but what is it? Like, you could say an apple is a fruit, but what exactly is BDS to you?
Could you please try to explain what you're trying to ask? You know, I think we all clearly know that it's boycott, divest, sanction, and it's a movement, an economic movement, that singles out Israel. Everybody's aware of that. I'm not clear what you're trying to get at.
Is it only on certain Israel products? Is it on all Israel products? Is it on...
Why don't you answer that question?
Well, I'm asking you because I see we all use an iPhone, and we all use our medicines from Israel, and we all use Waze, we all use their technology, we don't think twice about it. So what exactly, is it just Ahava? I mean, I just came from Israel, and I don't quite understand what you're asking, what you're looking for here. Like, what are they boycotting? Just certain products they're doing? Is this it?
I don't think anybody up here is part of the BDS movement.
No. Okay, I'm just curious.
So we know that it's a movement against the economic, it's an economic sanction against Israel. Nobody here is really involved in the BDS movement to sanction Israel, okay? So to ask that question is a little...
Okay, that was just my concern. Because I'm listening to everyone speak, and sometimes I feel that people who are against it for it, they're not really saying what they're for, what exactly, they're not really defining it to me, except for the people who are against it. Okay, thank you.
Can I say something? Well, this is actually public discussion. This is your time for us to listen to you, not for us to go back and forth with you guys after conference meeting. We will talk about the update. We're here, I'm here to listen to everybody, to hear everybody's different opinions here tonight.
Okay, that's what I never went to this before. But I was just curious if we were all talking about the same things.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm woke, and I hear everybody's opinion, because before this, I had, you're right, I had no idea what was BDS. I had to Google it, I had no idea. So I'm here to listen to everyone. I don't think we're gonna all say our opinions, because you'll probably be here until tomorrow morning, but yeah.
I wasn't even asking, I was asking my definition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Debbie Atlas, 310 Lincoln Avenue, Highland Park. I'm going to read from the House of Representatives, sorry? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, you have to get close.
I'm going to read from the House of Representatives' definition of BDS, the resolution that was passed in July. Whereas cooperation between Israel and the United States is of great importance, especially in the context of rising antisemitism, authoritarianism, and security problems in Europe, the Middle East, and North Africa. Whereas the global boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement, BDS movement, targeting Israel, is a campaign that does not favor a two-state solution and that seeks to exclude the state of Israel and the Israeli people from the economic, cultural, and academic life of the rest of the world. Whereas the global boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement is one of several recent political movements that undermines the possibility for a negotiated solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict by demanding concessions of one party alone and encouraging the Palestinians to reject negotiations in favor of international pressure. Whereas the founder of the global BDS movement, Omar Barghouti, has denied the right of the Jewish people in their homeland, saying, quote, "We oppose a Jewish state in any part of Palestine. No Palestinian, rational Palestinian, not a sellout Palestinian will ever accept a Jewish state in Palestine," unquote. Whereas the global BDS movement targets not only the Israeli government, but also Israeli academic, cultural, and civil society institutions, as well as individual Israeli citizens of all political persuasions, religions, and ethnicities, and in some cases, even Jews of other nationalities who support Israel. Whereas the global BDS movement does not recognize, and many of its supporters explicitly deny, the right of the Jewish people to national self-determination. Whereas university-based global BDS efforts violate the core goals of the university and global cultural development, which thrive on free and open exchange and debate, and in some cases leads to the intimidation and harassment of Jewish students and others who support Israel. Whereas the global BDS movement promotes principles of collective guilt, mass punishment, and group isolation, which are destructive of prospects for progress towards peace and a two-state solution. Whereas boycotts and similar tools aimed at promoting racial justice and social change have been used effectively in the United States, South Africa, and other parts of the world. And whereas, in contrast to protest movements that have sought racial justice and social change, the global boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement targeting Israel is not about promoting coexistence, civil rights, and political reconciliation, but about questioning and undermining the very legitimacy of the country and its people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives, one, opposes the global boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement, BDS movement, targeting Israel, including efforts to target United States companies that are engaged in commercial activities that are legal under United States law, and all efforts to delegitimize the state of Israel. Two, urges Israelis and Palestinians to return to direct negotiations as the only way to achieve an end to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Three, affirms the constitutional right of United States citizens to free speech, including the right to protest or criticize the policies of the United States or foreign governments. Four, supports the full implementation of the United States-Israel Strategic Partnership Act of 2014, and new efforts to enhance government-wide coordinated United States-Israel scientific and technological cooperative areas, such as with respect to energy, water, agriculture, alternative fuel technology, civilian space technology, and security, in order to counter the effects of actions to boycott, divest from, or... the effects of actions to boycott, divest from, or sanction Israel; and, five, reaffirms its strong support for a negotiated solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict resulting in two states, a democratic Jewish state of Israel and a viable democratic Palestinian state, living side by side in peace, security, and mutual recognition. Thank you. Thank you to all of us, all of you, for listening to us.
Thank you.
Ira Mintz, North Fifth Avenue. Just want to say a couple of more things. There are plenty of Israelis, including members of the Israeli government, who don't support a two-state solution, who don't believe in the rights of the Palestinians to have their own state, just like you are upset that there are Palestinians who may not believe that Israelis have a right to their own state. But we shouldn't be passing a resolution condemning members of the Israeli government or other Jews who don't support a two-state solution. That's not the business of our borough government. So similarly, it's not the business of our borough government to condemn those people on the other side who might not completely agree with Israelis' policies as it pertains to the Palestinians. What I think is great about our country and great about this borough is that people can come up to this microphone and say different things about these controversial issues. Our government, though, our government leaders shouldn't be condemning my side, their side, or the BDS side. That's not the place of our government. And I implore you, pass, adopt a resolution that's unifying in our town, not one that promotes divisions. And some of us have to go to bed because we go to work in the morning. I thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you.
John Kovak, North Third Avenue. Couple of quick points. I do believe there is a resolution here that is not exclusive to BDS and does mention that there is antisemitism that comes from the right and violence that comes from the right, which of course is true, and is every bit as worthy as condemnation. So I agree with the gentleman here in that sense, in that particular sense. The other thing I would like to emphasize is that BDS is not just targeting Israel, it's targeting American Jews, and that means every Jew in this town who doesn't suck up to their political point of view. So if you want to be accepted as a Jew, on the far left here, in this movement, you could renounce Israel, and you could allow yourself to be coerced into that. And that's what's happening on college campuses. Jewish students are being ostracized, and they are being excluded, and that is apartheid that is happening right here in our own backyard. And now it's moving into our library. And to suggest that it's not in this town, I find that shocking. So I think we can do something about it. I think there is a resolution that is not exclusive to BDS. It includes that type of antisemitism and acknowledges properly that there are other kinds of antisemitism. So I think we should get going on that, and I don't think we should confuse the issue by talking about six resolutions. I think there's one good resolution, and we need to move on that.
Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. I just wanted to, you inspired me to get up and talk, and thank you for pointing that out. I don't think it's right to single out anybody from any political movement. My point was that if we're going to focus on BDS and have an intellectual discussion about BDS, which I think could be very important and enlightening, we need to talk about the greatest enablers of hate speech in this country, and that could come from a number of places. That was my point. And I think that, you know, if you saw Governor Murphy and Senator Booker today respond to several comments made by members of various city councils in New Jersey, I think it's important, and I think we would all agree, it's important to call out hate when we hear it and when we see it. That's really important. I think the difference, though, is whereas a quote submitted to a newspaper making a statement, it is different when a political body creates an ordinance or a statement of record that very specifically assigns labels to residents that may or may not be because they have a certain geopolitical belief, to assume that members of the community who hold a certain geopolitical belief are this or that, carry this hate or not, I think is particularly dangerous. And that was my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'll try to be very quick, usually not. My name is John Wenz. I live at 301 South Fourth Avenue. First, I want to express the depth of the sadness and the sorrow that we were charged with the responsibility to address antisemitism again now in our nation and in our town and within our community, and that there's been a rise in antisemitism throughout our nation, our state, our county, and within our own community in various forms. And that is very, very sad. I'm not of Jewish descent, I'm mostly Irish, a little bit of German in there from my grandfather. But I grew up in a Jewish community in Manhattan, and I've lived with Jewish people my entire life in various ways. And I'm very glad to live in Highland Park, and I'm glad it's a community where there is, education is encouraged, that there's diversity that is here. One of the strong parts of being a member of the Human Relations Commission that I wanted to be able to impart was that there should be safety, there should be clarity about how we can complain and how we can support each other when any incidence of hate speech, discrimination arises, or bias arises. The Attorney General of the State of New Jersey, who I tend to admire with the work that he's done, has come out with recommendations about how, throughout the state, we can revise our criminal justice code so we can specifically provide safety to anyone that experiences discrimination. The implementation and the application of the required Attorney General guidelines offer best practice about how for us to be able to deal with this. I think this is a great tool for us to be able to apply to our community, and that it will be helpful. It'll be helpful to my sisters and brothers, my neighbors that are of Jewish descent, and I think it's really important for you to know the depth of sorrow that I feel.
I guess someone's gonna say, "Speak into the mic," so don't worry. I'm Deborah Lewitter. I live on Valentine Street, and there's been a lot of discussion tonight, a lot of papers being handed to you. Your brains are probably swimming between six resolutions, another upcoming resolution, probably a bunch more iterations. It boils down to what I can hear of two things. Number one, no matter what's going to happen, you know, there's discussion of, oh, we don't want to be divisive in the community. Well, no, of course we don't want to be divisive in the community. But whether you include BDS or you exclude BDS, it's going to be divisive to some group or another. So the question is, how are you going to align yourselves? And are you going to say, let's take a look and say, we're not singling out BDS, we are just saying that whatever organization is going to say things that are hateful, we are going to be against. And whether that's hateful to Jews, whether it's hateful to any group, we are against that. Or are we going to just kind of make it a resolution light and say, well, we're kind of against, like, you know, just, we want everybody to be happy and we want rainbows? Yes, we do, but we need to put some teeth into it and just say, whatever we're going to do is going to be wrong and be divisive, and some group people are going to be unhappy. Let's just say, and take a firm stance and say, we are just against hatred of all forms and of all types. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to apologize for speaking again.
You can speak again, but you must state your name and address again.
Henry Shands, 29 Brookville Road. I would like to correct one point that was made by a gentleman who spoke earlier, and the point being that identifying BDS in the resolution is a violation of anybody's right to free speech. That's nonsense. And I think the importance of identifying the US Congress resolution and that of many other states in the US which name BDS as a prime source of antisemitism, it does not violate anybody's right of speech. The person who spoke before, he can say whatever he wants, except scream fire in a theater. But the council itself can identify what is wrong, what is evil, and not shirk its responsibility.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, I see nobody, so I'm going to move on now. May I have a motion to adjourn to our conference meeting? Some more?
Second.
Okay. This portion of the evening is concluded.